Sixteen seventeen budget. Okay, so the MDD has approved their budget for two thousand seventeen. Herb is here, Chris, okay. Basically, this is their budget. It's pretty good to me. All the numbers look reasonable. Governor here, Linda, what do you think, Linda?
I think it looks good.
It looks good, so it's only been approved, we have to approve their budget as a formality because there are some figures. Anybody have any questions about the MDD budget?
Yeah, I'm gonna question the same line. Transfer sales tax dollars from the MDD to the town local repair funds?
Right.
We've talked about this before. I've got a concern with that, if we read through the thing, I can't find a passage where it says you can do this. And my concern here is that not just the eighty-four hundred is projected, but also the past dollars in the back. So, I talked to T M L, laid out what they've been doing, and they were at, they were one hundred percent positive, you cannot do this. So, I've got a letter out to...
I don't think that's right.
I got a letter out to Andy, he's gonna give me back and writing his opinion on that. The only thing I would say is I just budgeted pending that item, I'm probably okay with the other ones, but that item, I think, is, needs to be undone and probably re-versed.
What question do you have, Kira? How do you phrase your question?
Question was phrased, I can, I can dictate from my notes and do it exactly. Can an MDD transfer sales tax money to town? Then when you take a look at what's being done for Lakewood Village Road Project Fund, which is residential. We do that, and the answer is no. We went through all different types of permutations to find out is there any way to make that legal, and she was wanting to know enough.
Well, I mean, it is legal, and there's actually Attorney General, I mean, it's a deal with residential, a deal with road. Attorney General said, yes, you can.
So, I think for three years I've been asking for that verdict, and I have...
I'm gonna give it to the MDD, I'm gonna present it to the MDD. I'm gonna show them exactly the legal argument, I'm gonna show them Andy agrees. So, you're gonna waste our money, because Andy's already told me that it's legal.
No, it's been three years asking the same thing, I've never seen the verdict. It's got me a little nervous that I've never seen that.
I can show it to you, why didn't you ask?
We could ask for it.
Anyway, it's a hundred percent legal, Andy agrees, we already have the Attorney General opinion, he'd say you can do it. Residential is fine, roads are fine, basically it's up to the board, board needs to decide what it is, development project, it's up to the board. We're a small city, if you read the light section of code. Yeah, but there's lots of sections of code that just don't apply, there's one section applies only to small cities. Just small cities, and that's us, that gives a lot of latitude. Anyway, let's move on. Alright, so this is their budget, do I have a motion to approve the MDD budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen budget for the MDD.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Second, who's in favor? Andy closed. Alright, who next up? Alright, so this was a memo that I put out, just dealing with the budget for two thousand seventeen. This is basically just went over a little bit of the changes that we had made. Looking at a few numbers here. So, here's the budget.
No, you should be...
I think they're...
What's it?
The next one up, the memo, is what you said, actual?
I want the one that has actual.
I think you, I think you need to scroll up in your book.
Did I put it under the...
I think there are Bs, like the Bs.
Well, there you go, sorry. Oh, yeah, see the, see the little plus sign next to the Bs? If you, if you drop that down, silver, drop that down a little over there.
Okay, so, basically where we're at is we're looking at two thousand seventeen, so the numbers in there right now are forecasting a surplus in the budget on the city side. And pretty much break even like we always do on the utility side, we do a lot of CapEx, so the CapEx that's in here, we'll discuss it in a minute. See, we spent about three hundred thousand dollars on CapEx in the last couple of years. We spent a lot on CapEx this year because of the water tanks, pressure tanks, the fire hydrants. We have spent a lot of money in the city side increasing our capacity. So, this is kind of the basic summary here. General fund is obviously a little bit negative right now, some of that will clean up, but probably gonna end up here a little bit negative. There's a lot of incidentals in there, some weird things, we bought some property. We had a couple of other expenses that came up that were unplanned. So, a couple of those things have come in, and we don't like permits and credit. A little bit of this here. Okay, so, general fund. Alright, so the latest numbers here, I made a couple of changes, so... The sales, profit tax and the debt servicing, this comes straight out of D cap. This is the certified totals, this is the number. So, unless we change the tax rate, that's the number for those two. Sales tax, so what I did is relative to what we had before, I added the two thousand and fifteen actuals, but these are unaudited, because the auditor doesn't audit individual line items. The auditor only audits clusters. So, these are the numbers based on pulling the financials per year. So, sales tax, estimating thirty thousand, we're on pace right now for about thirty thousand. We've got two more months to go, we're running, as you can tell, that's ten months out of the year, that's ten months in, twenty-five hundred dollars times two is five thousand. So, about thirty thousand should be where we're on, sales tax. Building permits, so what I've done here is the gray or the blue, if you can see it, these are numbers which are truly discretionary. That's the number they used to plug in at seventy-seven thousand every year. They just put seventy-seven thousand in for building permits, and then went ahead and spent money like it would just happen. We put in thirty, thirty's been pretty much what we tried to do. This was an amended budget back here, and we amended it because we knew we were gonna be a little big. So, we've got seventeen thousand so far this year. These numbers, the rest of these numbers are really not material. The one big change here is rein inspect fees, we keep the reinspects different, so if you fail inspections, we put that revenue in a different bucket. So, it doesn't show up like new home construction. Because new home construction is when you get your building permit, that comes with twenty inspections, is it twenty or seventeen? That comes with seventeen inspections are embedded in your big building permit. So, these reinspects are when they fail, because that's truly not something you can count on. We're not gonna bank on somebody failing. It was over eight thousand dollars, and that's because we had two houses in here that had a astronomical number of fails. There were two houses which we had significant issues of an unprecedented nature. I'm not anticipating us ever going through that ever again. Rest of stuff here is pretty straightforward. Franchise fees, we got in thirty-five thousand back in two thousand and fifteen. We're a little light this year, we're at thirty-one, we're probably at about thirty-two, maybe thirty-three, we pretty much got everything. Franchise fees can be quartered. We've got a couple of extra houses, so again, being a little conservative, making that number look like thirty-two. Any questions so far? A lot of the revenue side is, you know, how many pools are we gonna have? We just kind of, usually kind of go with the last number for the previous year, call it that. Fee for services, I'm just keeping it the same right now, I have not done the allocations, a lot of that would depend upon some costs I still have to estimate. So, that is the fees that the utility fund has to pay the city for handling, the insurance, the banking, the billing, the audits, the mowing. That's all the things that the utility fund gets from the city. The city provides these services, but the utility fund has to reimburse the city for all of these services, because we don't have utility people doing the banking, or the auditing, or that kind of stuff. So, that's what that fee is there. Just so everybody knows, we had an asset sale that was great. Lean receipts, so, we typically, usually, I do not like to budget much for liens, I don't like to budget for fining people. That's why the fine, the code enforcement is zero. I don't ever wanna have a budget in the expectation that we're gonna fine our citizens. I don't like that. I know cities have to do that, the police departments, they do that for tickets and all that, it's a key part of budget.
What was the S S?
We sold a half lot.
Oh, okay, I remember.
So, that's why this is like, yes, sometimes we get some code enforcement stuff, we fine people, but it's not something which we browse for, we put in budget. The lien receipts here, this happens because we lien up property, we do ordinance suppose, we lien it. We probably got over seventy thousand dollars in liens on one house. We lien the house and we're knocking down, we have liens on that. So, we, we tend to do lots of liens when we have to do abatements. So, if we have to split the money out, and you don't pay us, we lien it. When it comes due is when it comes due, we just get one of these checks and now it's great, check comes, oh, great, it's title company. What's in there? Oh, hey, somebody who's got a lien from nineteen ninety-seven, they're paying off, it's great. So, basically, this is what we're looking at here, as you expect fairly flat revenues. Because we're not gonna budget big numbers on the housing. Conservative on the revenue side, very conservative, we don't wanna budget revenues that may not materialize. Now, you can imagine, look at the, two to nine thousand here, take that nine thousand out of this year, we'd have been at four oh two. Dead on the money, right on the money as far as the revenues go. So, the revenue side, it's pretty predictable, the only wad card is the number of building permits. The nice thing is that if we overshoot on that, we don't have to make a building inspector, because there were no houses, so the expense side goes away. Alright, any questions about the revenues? That was our half lot. So, we sold a half a lot of the land, which wasn't, couldn't go a half a house. So, we sold it to the guy, and only on a half, it made a deal with him, if you go to the house, we give him a break. He didn't go to the house.
Anybody do the math, it's a percentage increase in taxes. What are we up to? I'm okay taking out the nine grand from revenue.
What am I, four, four fifteen over four oh two?
Three percent, one percent.
Yeah, about three percent. Alright. No, taxes, revenue.
So, that's the total revenue.
Yeah.
Oh, the extra tax?
Well, taxes, uh, bill of duty, yeah, so overall revenue, the pie, the pies, we're forecasting the pie to be three percent bigger.
At which one, which line are you talking about?
The grand total, the four, four twelve and four oh four, it's about, it's under three percent.
Yeah, yeah.
That's roughly. Okay, so on the, on the expense side, you know, we have our usual expenses here. Again, here is the unaudited actual stuff that we have here. Without going into the, the accounting detail, the reason why this is unaudited is because the numbers are correct in the aggregate, but they're not necessarily, some things get recorded in multiple places. In other words, the doorknob falls off the door and we fix it, that could be going to town maintenance, that could go into contingency, it depends upon where Linda codes it. The auditor doesn't care whether or not it's town maintenance or whether it's city hall maintenance, it's maintenance, auditor doesn't care. I usually go back in when we're doing the budget, and I go back to each one and make sure that what I think is where it should go. I don't do that with the final numbers, I only do it for the year to date. These numbers are accurate, these numbers are going back in and made sure that town maintenance is, is fixing the light pole. And when we had to fix the air conditioning thermostats, that's city hall maintenance, okay, that makes sense? But the auditor doesn't give a crap, this all goes under one bucket, he calls it maintenance, so he doesn't care.
So, so who does the audit? If it's something, if a year and a half ago, it wasn't audited, and six months ago, it's audited, who does the year and a half ago audit?
This, the auditor never audits the line items.
So, when does two thousand fifteen, a year ago, when does that, it never becomes audited?
The line items are not audited, the auditor takes our accounts, and when he does his audit based upon generally accepted accounting principles. He doesn't, just like Pepsi doesn't have nine thousand line items on their income statement. So, what the auditor does is, let's say, town hall improvements. Okay, he's not gonna go look at...
The question just is, when does it become audited?
These line items are never audited by the auditor, it doesn't, it's never audited, the line.
Yes, that's, I just wanna make sure, so that if you were to look at two thousand fourteen, he would also show us un-audited two thousand fourteen?
I could go into QuickBooks and pull out the QuickBook reports, that's right, because here's the problem, just so everybody knows, again, okay, we're gonna do the audit, let's say we're getting ready to do the two thousand and sixteen audit. Okay, the auditor says, I'm ready, it's, it's November, ready to do the audit. At that point, we let him use our QuickBooks, he takes our QuickBooks from us electronically, he locks us out. We're locked out, we can't make entries. Once it goes to the auditor, he's got control of our books, because it wouldn't make sense for us to give him the set of the books, then whether to start changing stuff. So, he has control of the books. At the end of the audit, he comes and tells us, here are the entries I want you to make, here are twelve entries, ten entries. He sends Linda an email and says, here are the entries you must make into QuickBooks. And they deal with balance sheet items, they deal with recording depreciation, recording accounts receivable, they deal with converting from cash to accruals. There's like twelve entries he wants us to make. We make those entries, and that's it, over, we don't touch the books for two thousand and sixteen, it's over. We don't go back in and change anything, he's locked them up, he said, these are the entries to close the books, the audited books are now closed, we never go back. We can't. So, what I do in this one right here, like this right here, part of what I do to make these numbers is I print out every single transaction there is, every one of them here. So, we're doing the budget, I can say to you, we really did spend eleven hundred and thirty on abatement mowing. What you didn't see was, we did one town mowing, when we built the park, and Linda coded it and put it in here by accident. It should've gone up here in town mowing. The auditor wouldn't care, mowing's mowing. I care. So, when I do a budget, like tonight, these numbers are absolutely accurate. These numbers are not because the auditor didn't change them. So, when you look back here, that abatement mowing, I can't guarantee you right now, and we can't change it if there was an instance of town mowing that's in here, we don't change it.
Maybe I didn't receive my question. You keep saying that two thousand and sixteen, two K is audited.
By me.
By you.
Yeah.
But two thousand and fifteen, which ended a year ago, is not audited, and it ends two thousand and fourteen. I'm just questioning, when we say unaudited...
Yeah.
Wouldn't you think that the year that's close a year ago would be the audited year?
It is audited.
But then why, why is...
The line items are not audited, we haven't audited, but the auditor does not have every line item like we do. The auditor says mowing, or he says, actually, he takes about ten of these and calls them town maintenance. He doesn't segregate mowing, he doesn't segregate the individual line items.
So, we're not gonna, it's just, the lines of the line items are never gonna be audited, so everything in the past is unaudited, but we feel comfortable, we gotta do it, I'm with that.
He takes a sample, I think, is what you're saying, he takes a sample, he doesn't audit every line item, he takes a sample.
Yeah, so, so these numbers here are good numbers, these numbers here, because you said you want the actuals.
Yeah.
So, these are the actuals that come out of our accounting system. And I'd say they're ninety-five percent accurate, but I cannot guarantee you that when it gets to electricity, that the reason why that's sixty-four twenty-one is because there's thirteen... Thirteen bills got paid that year, instead of twelve. Can't tell you that.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, so, on the attorney fees, I talked to Andy. Attorney fees, the issues that we have are, we used to budget twenty thousand was our baseline for attorney fees, and then, of course, we have whatever happens. Obviously, they've been high the last two years because of litigation. Now, if we have, we, the litigation's over, but somebody can sue us. If they sue us, it's gonna go up. We have developer agreements, if land plan comes in, we have to have a developer agreement, it's gotta be drafted by our attorney. Who pays for that? Well, according to Andy, the developer pays. Well, that's like going out to dinner and I say, you pay. Is it enforceable? No. Is it, is it common? Yes. So, we hope they'll pay. According to Andy, developers should pay. Hopefully. But none of that is in there, the P I, if we do some sort of taxing district, that should come out. Now, here's an example, again, since you guys are here, the impact fees, we gotta come up with an ordinance for the impact fees, right? Got legal fees associated with the impact fees, right? Recoverable, right? When?
Later.
Later. Andy's not gonna wait. We're gonna have to pay it now. So, that twenty might not be a good number.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, Mark.
Yeah.
We're gonna try to do our best ability to manage to that number. If it happens that we can't keep it under that number, what are we gonna do?
I'm gonna come back and say to you, what, you know, the, the, the impact fee, Andy's told me that's gonna cost ten thousand dollars for him to go through the impact fee stuff.
Okay, so the council will be, will have the authority to approve anything beyond that, above the two thousand dollar question?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we monitor it, now, we don't monitor it every, every paycheck, because again, it's in arrears, right?
But we also have been amend the budget.
That's right.
If three months from now, all of a sudden, we're, we're at eighteen.
Yeah.
Come back and amend it and figure out how we're gonna account for whatever we're forecasting from the record.
Right, I mean, we used to always budget twenty, twenty is kind of our standard number for, you know, generic ordinances, reviewing this, phone calls about this, that, and the other thing. Twenty was a good number for kind of everyday, day-to-day stuff. But we had to do a lot of zoning, a lot of subdivision, a lot of development-related costs have been following through this thing. We need to change the zoning, and Andy wants to make a change to subdivision. He wants to change our ordinances and make some of the stuff, he wants to make a change before these developers come in.
Well, my point is, the council, regardless of the alternative route we take, the council will have authority for approving a change to that two thousand, but that's the way we do it, just...
Like we're sitting here, it's not...
Exactly, okay.
Fire EMS, we're guessing, I mean, fire EMS is in arrears, we get that based upon how many runs there are this year, is, is what we pay next year, so it's always a year behind. Interesting issue with the, with the fire EMS is, we've had a couple of times, every time, every time there's a run, five fifty? Every time you see the whole own fire engine come in town, or the EMS guy, it's five hundred fifty dollars. Every time they leave the station, even if they turn around before they get here, it's five hundred fifty dollars. That's what we have to pay every single time. So, we had it happen where, it's happened, I believe, now twice, somebody lets their dog out, they tax someone, they call EMS. I don't think it's right that the town, you have to pay that five hundred fifty dollars because you let your dog out, you were negligent, you actually violated city ordinance. We've made the people, we've told people they have to pay, and they have, they've paid the town, you know, for that EMS for that. Is it legal? I don't know. It seemed like the right thing to do, because it's not fair that you were negligent, you know, you actually caused somebody harm by what you did. So, here's another issue we had, we had, we had somebody come out, I came home, fire EMS are here, two sheriff's departments are here, because of a domestic issue. Should we pay for that? It's tricky. I don't, I don't mind, look, if you've got chest pains, or you, you, you know, you need to call a doctor, call a doctor. But is there a line you draw, or say, look, you know, if you, if you abuse your spouse, and the sheriff comes out and arrests you, should we have to eat the five hundred fifty dollars?
So, what are all the towns doing?
I, I don't know, I don't know if it's legal or not.
You know, I mean, so, the rent, what's the best practice to what the towns?
Well, they're not on a permanent basis.
Well, some are.
Not the ones that are, they're all, they already have their contracts.
I'm not so sure, fixed costs, I'm not so sure how they pay for it, comes into whether somebody else pays for it. The question is, you know, what are the towns, they will, because if it's not legal, I don't wanna go down the path of having to fight attorney fees to defend ourselves six months a time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure if it's even, you know, like, I, I don't know, maybe I'm just different, it's irritating to me, you...
I give you that.
We're seeing, we're seeing a change in a lot of emergency management response across the entire country. For example, there are many states in the past two years that voted in at state legislature level that it was okay to charge for search and rescue when it's due to your own negligence.
Right.
If you go off into the woods and you are ill-equipped and, and in bad health and stuff like that, guess what, we're gonna charge you the cost of that rescue. And in some cases, it's running fifty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars to go be, because people have bullets. So, it's, it's legal as long as there's an ordinance or a regulation or a law that allows you to charge for that.
I'm just not so sure Texas has that.
Texas doesn't need to have it, as long as it's, as long as the town has something that says in these cases, we will, because there's individual towns in Texas that charge for rescue.
I'm with you, but what I'm saying is, we don't currently have ordinance.
I know, that's what I'm saying, we can fix that.
Unless the state has one.
We can fix that, we can fix that if I put in an ordinance, say, I mean, you're reimbursed, you're reimbursed to town for actual cost.
Okay, let me, let me back it up one step, is there, is it worth me looking into, I mean, what's, what are, what are you guys feeling, is that like, look, you know, I never wanna say, don't call fire, any message costs us money.
Don't do that, yeah.
You can't do that.
No, no.
So, is this... The answer is, if you need to call, call, and then the other item is, I think we're jerking off the agenda. We're talking about the budget, now we're kind of jerking off talking about the others.
Okay, alright, fair enough, good one. Alright, um, okay, next item, which is a gray area here, in blue actually, is the playground. So, here's the problem with the playground, the playground, and I put playground in me, excuse me, Wood Park, we zeroed the playground budget for many years. We, we took it to zero because of, as I talked about earlier, because of our financial conservatism. Well, look, the Witz gave us land, they gave us Wood Park, we're supposed to make that into a park. We have done zero in like five or six years, we've done zero, all I've done is I put dirt there, I graded it out, I set it up to have some sort of basketball court or some sort of court there. We, we've done nothing since then. So, we're starting to come out of the bottom, we've hit bottom, we're coming out now, we have some money. Putting money into the playground, we got a lot of younger kids now, there's like twelve of them I know of. We got people that are invested in the playground, we're adding some more equipment in the next couple of weeks. We owe it to the Witz, we've got to do something with Wood Park, we have to make the playground good now. We can throw twelve thousand at the roads. We're not gonna accomplish squat with twelve thousand. Twelve thousand toward the playground doesn't matter. So, in other words, you know, I look at this and go, twelve thousand dollars towards something that's gonna cost two fifty, doesn't really get us materially closer. Twelve thousand is something where it can make a difference. We owe it to the playground, we stiffed them for like six years' money.
So, that's all going to Wood Park?
No, no, I, I, I'm gonna come up with a proposal, but, but if, but if the council...
That's town parks.
Yeah, so, so the council says, no, we want that to be zero, we wanna plow this... Yeah, so, so if the council says, no, we want that to be zero, we wanna plow this 12,000 to Melody Way, fair enough. I'm telling you, my budget says, we've got, we owe it to the Winds, we owe it to the playground, we owe it to all the little kids. People want umbrellas over the playground. It's friggin' 100 degrees outside, the playground, it's 200 degrees. They want an umbrella over somebody out to rest. It's hard to argue for this.
I think, I think.
What's it gonna cost to do Wood Park according to what you think you need to do?
I, that's, I'm gonna put together some numbers, but if the council says we wanna zero this line, then I don't need to put in any numbers.
In my opinion, 12,000, if you're talking about putting in a basketball court or a tennis court, you can't do it for 12,000.
Yeah, tennis court's the problem. We can talk about the options, Claire, but.
My opinion is, I think we need to leave it there and do something. Start doing something. We'll be able to do a tremendous amount, but something's better than that.
We're, we're running out of lots. We're running out of space, right? So, we gotta encourage people to use the parks, make a place as they go.
My only concern is, we're putting numbers in and we're not putting detail behind it. So, that's my only concern, is if it's still 12 grand in there, we're gonna do it, what are we, what are we spending on?
Well, that's the next step, again.
Yeah.
That's the next step. So, we're not here to delineate it tonight.
As long as we don't vote on it, I'm okay with it, but if we're gonna vote on a number with nothing behind it, yeah, they're contentious.
That's a not-to-exceed number, so whatever we come up with.
I'm gonna bring back individual projects. Right, right now, the issue is, in the past years, we have spent zero. We've spent almost nothing on the park. This 8,000 was, we finally put mulch in there. This is equipment that I've had.
Actually, and Gary fixed the ladder, the stairs.
Yeah, we've added the stairs, the thing was shut down for a while, it was not safe. So.
I'm not gonna be, I'm just saying, if you're gonna have a budget, you have numbers. What makes up those numbers should be part of the budget before you vote. And that comes out of the budget workshop and you look at the details. And before you create numbers out there, when we know that we don't, you know, we don't plan.
The issue, I agree. The issue though is, when a number has basically been zero, I'm not gonna go out and do all the research and come in with a detailed plan about, this is how much a basketball court is, this is how much, these are the three-piece equipment, this is what the umbrellas are. I'm not gonna go through all of that. The detailed plans and artist drawings and cost estimates, go all that, when a bunch of line items has been zeroed out. I first have to get the council to say, are you willing to spend some money on that line item?
So, where is it zeroed out there? I see 8,000.
That was the, yeah.
Last year.
That was last year, that was the mulch. We've zeroed it out all those other years because of the...
But I see 8,000 there and I see 2015 at 35,000, so where did we zero that out?
35,000 was when we were trying to get the YMCA camp and we're dealing with the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers said, if you wanna participate and get the YMCA camp, we need to see a line item in your budget that says you have funds. That you, you have funds available to maintain the YMCA if you get those 20 acres. So, we did a real fast budget amendment to collapse a lot of lines to show the Corps, we were willing, we could spend 35,000 on parks to get us the YMCA camp over there.